Call the meeting order. Please rise for the pledge of the flag. Thank you. Agenda item 1.3, roll call. Be it noted that all nine board members are present. Agenda item number two, presentations, recognition and rewards. We have one presentation tonight. Two of our elementary principals, Dr. Chris Dango from West Pots Grove and Stephanie Myers, our principal at Ringing Rocks, have a presentation on our kindergarten to second grade clubs at the elementary buildings.
You ready?
We are ready.
All right. So, thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. This is Myers and myself, and this is Rod Wills. Mrs. Hope couldn't be here. She's also the club coordinator at West, but Mrs. Rod Wills over at Rocks. We run clubs every fall and spring.
Yep.
So, we have a variety of clubs, you know, that the kids wanted to talk to you a little bit about. They're very excited, so I know you don't want to hear from the old people. So, we'll let our second graders here at West start us off, and then we'll pass it over to the Ringing Rocks crew. So, go ahead, Ms. Olivia G.
Hello. My name is Olivia Greenawal, and I am a second grader at West Pots Grove. We are here tonight to talk about our after-school clubs program. Over the past few years, we have had several clubs such as the kindness club, fun with fitness club, art club, dance club, and steam club, and science club. Right now, I am in the bead buddies club. Last year, I was in the fashion designer club. I like clubs because it is fun to do things at school when you don't have anything to do at home. I also think it's fun since I get to be with my friends and make things such as bracelets and necklaces. How I would, now I would like to introduce my friend Kyrie Douglas, who is also in the bead buddies club with me. Thank you.
All right. When should I start?
Go ahead.
Hello. Hello, my name is Kyrie Douglas, and I am also a second grader at West Pots Grove. I am in the bead buddies club this year with my friend Olivia. Last year, I was in the board games club. I like clubs because I get to do a lot of things and enjoy being creative by expressing my feelings with the beads, and I feel like a fortune teller. And another reason, another reason I like clubs is that I get to have a lot of fun with my friends after school and spend more time with them before I go home. Thank you again. And now, I would like to introduce my friend Juliana Corminas.
Hello. My name is Juliana Corminas, and I am also a second grader at West Pots Grove. I'm in the creative drawing club this year. Last year, I was in fashion designer with my friend Olivia. I like clubs because I really enjoy drawing different types of things like building and animals. My favorite part this year was when we drew our name and decorated it with cupcakes, flowers, and hearts. One of the reasons I enjoy clubs so much is I get to sit with my friends and have fun together while we laugh and draw. I hope, I hope we can participate in clubs again this spring. Thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate it.
So, at Ringing Rocks, we have six clubs. We have a Lego club, games club, technology club, and book club, science club, and kindness rocks. We also have one club that is funded through our SOAR grants, which is an environmental club. We at Rocks have 75 students that are participating, and they meet for a total of 16 hours over 12 weeks. We hold them once or twice a year, or twice a year, and we hold, we hold it for first and second graders. We found that kindergarten, it was a really long day for them, so we shortened it just to the, to the first and second graders. But I have brought some friends with me tonight to let them tell you about their experience with clubs. Come here, Enzo. So, what is your name?
Enzo.
And what club are you in?
Um, technology club.
And what do you like most about clubs?
Um, you can do computers, and you can do Roblox, robot mean, and, and Osmo, and you can do free time on your iPad.
Very cool. Good job, bud. Okay. Hi, Sujian.
Okay, CJ.
Okay. Ready? Come here. Sujian, come over here, bud. Let's see. Can you say what your name is?
Michaela.
Michaela, good job. What's your name? Yeah, what's your name?
Hello.
Hello, yes. What's your name?
Kayla.
CJ, good job. And we are part of Kindness Rocks, right? And we're in our club. CJ, what do you like to do in your club? Ready? Ready? Let's go.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on. Try that again. Right here. This one.
I like to play with friends.
You like to play with your friends, right? Michaela, what do you like to do in clubs?
Play.
With who?
Shehan.
With Shehan, and who else?
CJ.
CJ, and all your friends.
Matthew.
And Matthew, yeah. What do we do at clubs? What do we play? Do we go outside? Yeah, what else do we do?
Play-Doh.
Play-Doh? Yeah, you're right. What else? Do we color? Yeah, and we do puzzles, and we work as a team, right? Good job, guys. Good job, guys. I'm so proud of you. Want to say thank you? Good, thank you. Ready? Try it again. What are you doing?
Good night.
We do also have a short video of things that they do, so.
I'm in that picture.
Wait, wait. Say.
Rhythm.
Aww.
That's you again.
Jordan.
I'll be.
Danielle.
Yeah.
That's Jordan.
Yeah.
My friend.
No.
One more.
I'm not even sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
CJ, Michaela.
Do you want to say one more thing? Want to say thank you? Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Does anybody of you have questions?
Hi, dear.
I have a question. How are you so brave to come up here and talk in front of all these people? You guys did a great job. We're so proud of you.
I, I sleep in my room.
Okay. Well, great job. Keep sleeping.
Thanks again for supporting clubs. Appreciate it. Thank you to all the students for getting involved in these clubs, and a special thank you to all the teachers who support these clubs and the administrators who support the clubs. Moves us to agenda item number three, public comment. This is the first of two public comments. The first is limited just to agenda items that appear on the board agenda for the evening. Is there any public comment? We have a second one, which can be for any topic, which is towards the end of the meeting. Any public comment at this point in the room? Any public comment online? No. Agenda item four, report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. I've got a couple of things to talk about. First, a shout-out in celebration of our Lower Pots Grove Elementary School counselors, Ms. Sue Shannon and Rebecca Cortez. They applied and were rewarded a grant to be trained in and implement the CHOP School Mental Health Consortium Friend-to-Friend Learning Collaborative for the 25-26 school year. This grant opportunity includes training for our counselors in a program focused on preventing aggression, promoting positive peer relationships among third to fifth-grade students, and it will further enhance our Tier Two and Tier Three MTSS offerings for students. It will consist of training and a cross-school collaborative with other districts and teams implementing. So, I want to thank Ms. Shannon and Ms. Cortez for their hard work in securing this grant, and look forward to the effect of this program on our students. Another thing, on November 13th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Pots Grove Senior High School, we are hosting a family online safety night. This is in collaboration with Mission Kids, Pots Grove School District, and Upper Pokiomen School District. This training is open to caregivers of students ages two to 12, and also kids ages eight to 12. Caregivers will learn how to talk about sensitive topics like boundaries, personal safety, and navigating today's digital world. This worksheet, workshop will help caregivers communicate effectively with their children to keep them safe. The students will join Mission Kids Certified Community Prevention Educators for an engaging session about online safety, including net smarts. The hour-long program provides age-appropriate videos and activities that teach kids how to stay safe online. It raises awareness on online risks and empowers kids to make safer choices both online and offline. Kids will enjoy sports, arts, and crafts, and other fun activities supervised by certified care staff during the second hour. This program was brought about through the work of Dr. Amory Lucas in working with a number of other school districts to host multiple events in the area. So, thank you, Dr. Lucas, for bringing this to us. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Finerty. Agenda item five is approval of the high school and middle school student activities accounts, as well as the cafeteria account for September 2025.
I would like to motion, make a motion that we approve the high school student activities, the middle school student activities, and the cafeteria accounts for September 2025 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the high school and middle school student activity accounts and the cafeteria accounts for September 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item 6.1 is approval of the September 2025 treasurer's report.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the September 2025 treasurer's report as presented and file it for audit.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the September 25 treasurer's report. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item seven, personnel, 7.1, administrative staff appointments. We have the approving the appointment of a dean of students for the high school.
I would like to make a motion we approve 7.1, and congratulate and welcome to Pots Grove.
Motion and a second to approve dean of students for the high school. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes.
If I can just call everyone's attention, Ms. Toledo is in the back row. Hello? Yes.
7.2 is the approval of one support staff and intervention tutor at Ringing Rocks.
I would like to make a motion we combine and approve 7.2 through 7.6.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve 7.2 through 7.6. This is the approval of the intervention tutor at Ringing Rocks, the approval of five support staff, the approval of non-athletic appointments, five at the high school, one is a correction to salary, four are rescinding applications that were previously offered, and three rescinded at the middle school. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motions pass. Agenda item eight, 8.1, is a settle agreement with Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School regarding 2016-2017 tuition costs.
I would like to make a motion we approve 8.1.
Second. Motion and a second to approve, motion and a second to approve 8.1, the settle agreement with Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. 8.2 is a contract approval with NRG Energy to enroll in a demand-response program. This is a program that provides incentives for electrical usage, control of electrical usage during peak hours. NRG Energy, for those of you who are interested, stands for energy, the NRG. It's an initial, it stands for nothing other than energy. So, it's approval of that contract.
I would like to make a motion we approve 8.2.
Second. Motion and a second to approve 8.2, the contract with NRG to enroll in a demand-response program. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item 8.3 is approval of the modernization of the elevator at Lower Pots Grove Elementary School.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 8.3 with an explanation for the community.
Second.
So, 8.3 is a, an action item to approve the modernization of the Lower Pots Grove Elementary Elevator. The elevator at Lower is functioning properly. There is a software issue that is, that needs to be updated. The software that we have in this elevator in particular is no longer serviced by the company, so we're ordering parts to be ready to replace it should it fail, with the idea that we're actually replacing it in summer. Mr. Linky, did I capture all that correctly?
That is correct, because there's, excuse me, there's about a 14- to 16-week lead time for the parts, and then there's a five-week installation, so we're looking at 20 weeks, potentially.
We have a motion and a second to approve the modernization of the elevator. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda 8.4 is the first of two resolutions. The first, 8.4, is a resolution to withhold charter school payments. Because the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has not enacted a state budget for the 25-26 year, the district now faces a financial strain due to the delayed, delayed state budget. In order to preserve the district's resources, this resolution directs administration to withhold all charter school payments until a state budget has been enacted, and once the state passes the budget, we will resume payments to the charter schools.
I would like to make a motion we approve 8.4 and 8.5.
Second. Motion and a second to approve 8.4 and 8.5. 8.4, I explained, is the resolution to withhold charter school payments. 8.5 is a resolution to urge the Pennsylvania General Assembly to end the state budget impasse. Motion and a second to approve both of these resolutions. Any discussions? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motions pass. Agenda 9 is the action item, education. 9.1 is approval of early graduation for two students who have met all requirements for early graduation.
I would like to make a motion we approve 9.1 through 9.5.
Second. Motion and a second to approve 9.1 through 9.5. 9.1 is approval of two eligible students for early graduation. 9.2 is a memorandum of understanding with Mission Kids to provide online safety training. Dr. Finerty mentioned this in his report of superintendents. The district will be doing this in concert with students from Pottstown School District, as well as from Upper Pokiomen School District with the training. 9.3 is a memorandum of understanding with the YWCA for two programs that are at the middle school. One is called Boys to Mentors, and the second is Girls in Charge. This, the purpose of the program is to aid in the prevention of adverse childhood experiences and traumatic events in childhood, another of our efforts in helping kids with traumatic experiences. 9.4 is the approval of one mentor teacher, and 9.5 is the approval of four staff members to attend the Pennsylvania Education Technology Expo and Conference on February 4th. I want to note, the note there in the agenda has the year 2025. This is February 4 of 2026 they will be attending, so it's a change there in the agenda. So, those are the five items. Move in a second for that. Any discussion on any of the five? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motions pass. Agenda item 10 is policies. 10.1 is approval of four policies and two attachments. Policy 102, which is academic standards, 105, which is curriculum development, 122, extracurricular activities, 123, interscholastic activities, and two attachments for policy 918, parent and family engagement.
I would like to make a motion that we approve 10.1.
Second. Motion and a second to approve these four policies and two attachments. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item 11 is committee items. 11.1 is approval of the policy committee meetings from the meeting of September 23.
I'd like to make a motion we approve 11.1.
Motion and a second to approve the meetings of the September 23 policy committee. Any discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item 11.2 is a report from the October 14 Operations and Finance Committee from Louis Coraminus.
So, the Operations and Finance Committee met on Tuesday, October 14th. We had all members of the committee present, and eight of the nine board members in attendance, as well as Dr. Finerty, Mr. Linky, Mr. Blankenbiller, Mr. Borjes, and Mr. Butler on, in attendance on the school administration side. So, we discussed borrowing for the stadium project or other capital improvement projects, and essentially the advantages of facilitating that borrowing earlier and being able to earn interest on that borrowing due to the positive arbitrage from the rates. The other discussion was, our second discussion on the finance side was around the demand-response program through NRG that we just voted on tonight, which we expect to bring in an additional approximately 20K or so, depending on the amount of electric reduction done. On the operations side, we discussed rebidding the tennis court. We only received one bid last time when the bid was open, and I believe the bid also maybe wasn't fully compliant, so that will be rebid. And then, we also discussed the modernization of the elevator for Lower Elementary, which we also just voted on tonight as well. The third discussion was around the replacement of the HVAC system, or the HVAC units at the gym at Lower. And then, we had a discussion around the chiller units for the HVAC system at the high school, and our options in terms of refurbishing versus replacing those units as well. After that, we adjourn at 6:57 PM.
Thank you, Louis. Agenda item 11.3 is a report of the October 21 Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee from Jim Lappick.
The Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee met last Tuesday, October 21st. We had six board members in attendance and district office administration, as well as each of our building principals in attendance. The first item that we discussed was co-teaching update. That's one of our district goals that we're working toward, began this last year, has expanded throughout this year, including expansion of the number of sections that we have in each of the five buildings now. There is ongoing training that is occurring for all of our co-teachers that are involved in this, really in partnership with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to, to provide that ongoing support to them. We also discussed some updating that we're doing with our summer school and credit recovery at the secondary level. This is really done for two reasons. Number one, what we were doing was out of alignment with policy because of some leftover procedures we had in place from the pandemic. The other reason that we were doing it is really feedback that we were getting from our staff. So, really, we wanted to do a number of things as we began to look at this. We really wanted to increase the rigor. We wanted to enhance the experience for our students, and we really wanted to increase the expectations we have for our students during that summer programming. We will be charging a per-course charge for this credit recovery. That's about $100. We came to that fee researching what other districts in the immediate area were doing with that. We also developed an administrative regulation around this, so ongoing communication will begin happening with families as the need arises. A third, very brief update, was on personal finance. You heard some of that covered for those of you who were in policy tonight. We were updating our graduation policy to be inclusive of that half-credit personal finance that will be in place next year moving forward. We're also updating our program of studies, and that will be inclusive, Dr. Gonzalez and I had a conversation about that this morning, actually. So, that will be on the agenda for the November CIT to discuss that, as well as that addition to the personal finance piece, and we'll be bringing also to that committee meeting the new course proposal for personal finance as well. And then, finally, we had an update from Mr. Bitler on technology. Our ongoing move and transition to Link It has been going well. And then we also discussed the modernization of the elevator for Lower Elementary, which we also just voted on tonight as well. The third discussion was around the replacement of the HVAC system or the HVAC units at the gym at Lower. And then we had a discussion around the chiller units for the HVAC system at the high school and our options in terms of refurbishing versus replacing those units as well. After that, we adjourn at 6:57 PM.
Thank you, Louis. Agenda item 11.3 is a report of the October 21 Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee from Jim Lappick.
The Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee met last Tuesday, October 21st. We had six board members in attendance and district office administration as well as each of our building principals in attendance. The first item that we discussed was co-teaching update. That's one of our district goals that we're working toward, began this last year, has expanded throughout this year, including expansion of the number of sections that we have in each of the five buildings now. There is ongoing training that is occurring for all of our co-teachers that are involved in this, really in partnership with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to provide that ongoing support to them. We also discussed some updating that we're doing with our summer school and credit recovery at the secondary level. This is really done for two reasons. Number one, what we were doing was out of alignment with policy because of some leftover procedures we had in place from the pandemic. The other reason that we were doing it is really feedback that we were getting from our staff. So really, we wanted to do a number of things as we began to look at this. We really wanted to increase the rigor. We wanted to enhance the experience for our students and we really wanted to increase the expectations we have for our students during that summer programming. We will be charging a per course charge for this credit recovery. That's about $100. We came to that fee researching what other districts in the immediate area were doing with that. We also developed an administrative regulation around this. So ongoing communication will begin happening with families as the need arises. A third, very brief update was on personal finance. You heard some of that covered for those of you who were in policy tonight. We were updating our graduation policy to be inclusive of that half-credit personal finance that will be in place next year moving forward. We're also updating our program of studies and that will be inclusive. Dr. Gonzalez and I had a conversation about that this morning, actually. So that will be on the agenda for the November CIT to discuss that as well as that addition to the personal finance piece. And we'll be bringing also to that committee meeting the new course proposal for personal finance as well. And then finally, we had an update from Mr. Bitler on technology. Our ongoing move and transition to Linkit has been going well. There's been ongoing training that has occurred with our interventionists as well as our classroom teachers who are now using the parent communication feature within the system. There was an update about the technology in this particular room that we're sitting in right now and how that will begin to be upgraded in the coming months, year. And then we talked about some challenges that we're currently experiencing, some iPad connectivity that's occurring particularly with the new iPads at the elementary level. So our technology department is working with Apple to correct any of those pieces. The K2 headphones that we had in place that our students are using with that technology were breaking. And I think just today, those new headphones were arriving in classrooms. So I know the students were excited about that. And then projectors, much like the one hanging in this room all across our district, are beginning to fail. They are at the end of their life expectancy. Eight to 10 years they've been in place, Mr. Bitler? So as those begin to fail, the technology department is right now piloting some interactive boards that students and teachers could be using. So as those begin to fail, we'll be replacing those. They are currently in pilot in, across a couple of classrooms in the district to learn more about how they work in various classrooms. Anything else, Mr. Lappick?
Thank you. Daniel, Jim, thank you. Moves us to agenda item 12, new business. Stacy, let's begin with you.
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight for the club presentation. It was very nice to see the kids and also to encourage everyone to participate in the MCIU stakeholder survey. We're encouraging all staff, parents, and community to participate. It is up on the website as a banner and then Dr. Finerty also sent it out in his most recent email on the 27th. So if you could take that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Stacy. Tanya?
Yes, I would second that seeing the kids was fantastic and hearing about all the clubs. You know, my daughter is in a club as well and it really, it's one of the best things, seeing them thrive up there. I do want to give a shout out. This past Saturday, we had our trunk or treat, the PTA at West, and the weather held out wonderfully for that. Louis had a trunk there decorated wonderfully and I think it was a really great showing and a really great community effort. The, I believe the police department was also involved and had a trunk and it was just a really great event. So, well done.
Tanya, thank you. Anique?
I just had some brief updates from MCIU. They have two new, or two student programs. They're in their second year. One is Voices for Education and it provides students with opportunities to build advocacy skills and Dreaming Forward, which is a leadership development experience for students. And they have a blood drive on November 13th down at the MCIU from 1:00 to 6:00 PM. So you could go to their website and if anyone is interested in donating, could find out more information.
Thank you, Anique. Patty?
Not beeping. I just want to give a shout out. A couple of weeks ago at our pink out football game, I was part of the presentation. I'd like to thank all of our athletics and coaches and students that all participated all last year with the pink out. And you know, it's close to my heart. You know, I'm 16 years out now and the soccer team started this for me years ago and we were able to give them $3,003. So it really, the funds go directly to the patients. It's not any research. If they need gas money, there's Wawa, their giant cards for food. So we're continuing that and it wouldn't be possible if it didn't get the support from everybody. And it's one of the things we make proud of Potts Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Bill? Dr. Finerty?
Yes, I do have three quick things. First, hot off the presses, it was published today, the U.S. News and World Report, Best Middle Schools in Pennsylvania. Potts Grove Middle School was named to the 2025 Best Middle Schools in Pennsylvania, moving up 19 places from 293 to 274 out of 860 schools. So congratulations to our Potts Grove Middle School. That is truly impressive. One other thing, well, this is, there's a long, long piece and we'll share it in a different way, but you may have heard some of the news with some of the shutdowns. One of the ways that the, both the federal shutdown and what's happening in Harrisburg can affect us is SNAP, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which benefits food insecurity. This is going to start affecting people fairly, significantly, fairly quickly. So a lot of our student groups are working together, our social work teams are working together to run food drives so that we can do our, do our part to support people in need in our community. So look forward to some social media and other announcements about that and please consider ways you can support that. Lastly, next Thursday, November 6th, the Potts Grove Education Foundation invites you to the Second Annual Powderpuff Football Game. It's again Thursday, November 6th, starting at 3:00 PM. It is a open to the public. Please come on out and cheer. It starts at 3:00 PM. It'll be wrapped up by about 5:30, 6 o'clock. We're very excited. There's seven teams and this benefits the Potts Grove Education Foundation, which exists to support student learning in addition to what the district can do. So primarily STEM activities, music and arts through teacher mini grants and other programs. So I do hope you come out. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Finerty. I want to reinforce and build on something that Stacy had said. At our last board meeting, this board approved an independent assessment by the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to do three things with a focus on safety and security in our buildings with three main tasks. First is a stakeholder survey. Second is individual interviews. And third is an assessment of our special education programs and services. As Stacy said, the first piece, the stakeholder survey, is up as a banner on the website, also went out as a broadcast message yesterday. If you've not taken it, I encourage you to do so. Getting a good response here is helpful in looking at that data. So the more people that do it, the more representation we get. The individual interviews, there's a piece of the survey where you can request an interview. I would also ask you to sign up for an individual interview. That makes your voice even more amplified. If you have finished the survey and didn't do so, you can request an interview directly by sending an email to the executive director of the intermediate unit. Her name is Regina Speaker. Her email address is r speaker, S-P-E-A-K-E-R, at mciu.org. You can also find her name and email address on the intermediate unit website. The third piece of this is the assessment of special education services and programs. Dr. Speaker and her staff are just beginning to plan the deliverables in that and the dates, but the planning for that is underway of those three pieces. So again, as Stacy encouraged you, do the survey. I'm encouraging you to also sign up and do an individual interview. We'd like to get as many people doing that as possible. I talked to Dr. Speaker about that today. She expects that the interviews will be somewhere between 15 and 20 minutes in length. So it's not a lot of your time. She's very flexible on when she can arrange those. And again, you can write to her directly if you've not requested it through the, through the stakeholder survey at r speaker at mciu.org. Okay? Ashley?
I don't have much. I just wanted to mention that I did drop off clothes at the, I did. I did the, the great closet purge of October 2025 at home. So I had a great, great place to go drop everything off, which was, it was nice to know and they were quick and grabbing my stuff and off I went. So it was, I hope they made a lot of money off of it.
Thank you, Ashley. Jim? Jim, thank you. Louis?
I have a number of things and I'm going to try to make them all very quick. So number one, great job to the kids on the club's presentation today. It was great to see that. Number two, election day coming up. Don't forget to vote. Four seats on the board are up for election. So just wanted to point that out as well. Number three is piggybacking off of what Tanya had said. Trunk or treat at West was fantastic. I also know there was a Halloween dance at Lower, which we saw was being set up on Friday, or not at Lower, I'm sorry, at Rocks. And there was a trunk or treat at Lower. I'm trying to go quickly, so I'm getting things, the wires are crossing. So I didn't get to, you know, see those events, but I got great feedback from those that did. So thanks to everyone that was involved in making all of those events a success. Other item, I know multiple board members have visited Rocks over the last couple of weeks. I was there myself on Friday along with Jim and Ashley. So thank you to Dr. Finerty and Principal Myers for facilitating those visits and for the staff for being so hospitable and, you know, allowing us to enter their, their building and kind of see what they do and how they do it. And then the last thing, just around the budget, encourage your local legislators to pass a budget. You know, I understand that those that we have elected have agendas that they are trying to execute, that they believe are in the best interests of those who have elected them. However, when we get to this point, when they're at a standoff, the people who suffer are everyday people who need things like SNAP benefits and school districts and our students, we need this funding. You know, it's unfortunate that we have to pass a resolution to, you know, withhold payments or to tell the legislature to do their job and pass a budget. So I would encourage all of you to contact your local legislators and encourage them to pass a budget. The time has come. Thank you.
Louis, thank you. Moves us to agenda item 13.1, our second public comment. I have three forms that we'll turn in. We'll begin with them. The first is Brianna Robinson. Name township you live in, Brianna, and two minutes, please. Limitation.
Good evening. Brianna Robinson, Lower Potts Grove is where I live. Ringing Rocks is where I teach. I just want to take a moment to thank those of you who have taken the time to visit Rocks. This is something I have encouraged for years and I am very glad to see that it's finally happening. I've heard from colleagues who had the chance to meet with you during these visits and they noted that the chance to connect with you was appreciated. These visits are important not only for identifying challenges, but also for seeing firsthand the dedication and professionalism that our teachers bring to their classrooms every single day. Although I have not yet had the opportunity to see you during a visit, I know many of my colleagues have appreciated your presence. If you have not already visited other schools in the district, I would encourage you to do so as these experiences are valuable across our community. I also hope these visits will continue and the next time you are at Rocks, I invite you to stop by my wing. It's a bit tucked away and sometimes overlooked, but we would all welcome you to come visit our end. Again, because I come here every week and, or every meeting and say, hey, please show up. You're showing up and, and we really do appreciate the showing up. So thank you for that. And the headphones, Mr. Bitler, were a huge hit in the classroom today. The kids are so happy now. So thanks a lot.
Brianna, thank you. Laura McCorkle?
Thank you, Laura McCorkle, Lower Potts Grove, two children in the district. I would like to echo a lot of the positives that we've seen going on. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to all of us parents about what has been going on and thank you for taking the meaningful steps to begin to address these behaviors. We truly appreciate all of the improvements that have been made. We've noticed consistency with following the discipline code, willingness to adjust staffing and protocols, and the increased presence of not only Dr. Finerty, but board members in the school. Thank you very much. We are especially grateful for Ms. Myers. Her dedication in supporting the students, teachers, and families has been nothing short of extraordinary and we really appreciate everything she's done. Because of all of these actions, we truly are beginning to see progress. Behaviors are decreasing in both severity and frequency and most staff and students are beginning to feel more comfortable at school. It is important to remember that concerns do remain and behaviors are still occurring, sometimes during recess. We think it's important for duty aides to continue to have training to ensure that all of these physical incidents are properly reported and documented. We also ask, like Mrs. Robinson shared, that Dr. Finerty and the board continue to visit the buildings and to have these open and ongoing conversations with all teachers who are always in the building every day with these students. Teachers must be able to speak freely and honestly so that you can see exactly what's happening and understand not only the staff, but student perspectives each day. Additionally, the discipline code must continue to be followed, consequences upheld, and possibly support given to Ms. Myers so that she can continue to manage her very heavy caseload effectively. We do ask that we continue to listen to all stakeholders involved and not rely on one person's opinion of what is happening so that we can continue to make sure that Grove continues to be the place that we love to send our children. Thank you.
Laura, thank you. Brittany Conrad. Brittany Canard, my apologies.
Hi, my name is Brittany Conard. I'm in Lower Potts Grove and I have a son at Rocks. I just wanted to report on our end with our son, with our personal recess experiences that for him, it has greatly improved with what y'all are doing and he is having fun again. He's not having to feel like he needs to report back to us on every little thing that he observes. So we're day seven on recesses without incident, as he refers to it. So thank you for implementing these tools that, at least for now, seem to be doing a good job for him and for the others. I also want to say thank you for coming to Rocks, for putting feet in the ground. That's fantastic. You know, as parents, it's hard to be present all the time and seeing the lens through our kids and trying to effectively communicate that to y'all is not an easy task. And in order for us to give a voice to our kids, we have to feel like that you're there to listen and to receive the information. It's bittersweet because I feel like as a parent, if we weren't here doing this, would this change have started? So it's, it's, it's bittersweet kind of looking back on in that regard, but we're cautiously optimistic and we hope that these things continue to move forward in a positive light. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Yes. I guess I can't live that down.
Hello. So Robert Vigio, Upper Potts Grove Township. I have a student at Ringing Rocks. So just wanted to echo a lot of the sentiments that we've heard already. I do believe that there's a lot of positive change that's happening from the behavior aspect, from, you know, everything that Stephanie's been doing. I think the parents see it and I think that all the positives have been echoed a lot by the faculty that I've talked to and the teachers there. So a lot of positives there and hoping that we just see it continue. I know that there are things that are coming up and what I would like to just ask the board to consider is when looking at administration and opportunities that we may have for things like extending contracts and whatever else there might be, that we just put considerations in there as well to safeguard and just make sure that we are having some safety nets in place to make sure that we are continuing to see these positive changes happen. I think that the community, for the most part, and I'm sure everybody's experience is going to vary slightly here, but I do believe that everyone is, for the most part, seeing some sort of positive change and just want to make sure that we continue on that trend. So we do thank the board for going to the schools and getting involved and having that engagement, administration, you know, working to make those changes that everybody was hoping to see and, you know, I hope this positivity continues. Thank you.
Robert, thank you. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Anyone else in the room for public comment? Is there anyone online for public comment? No one else? Three reminders. Reinforce what Louis said. November four is election day. There are four open board seats. There are five candidates. Please get out and make your voice heard. You can help make a difference there. November eleven is our Operations Finance Committee meeting at six o'clock in this room. Come out and hear the work that committees do. Also, November eleven is our next school board meeting at seven o'clock, also in this room. Please continue to come back out. Your voices make a difference. Your opinions make a difference. We appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion in a second to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned.